Today began for my partner in this venture, Dr. Ricardo Aziz and myself at 7:30 this morning with a session like this at Georgia Health Sciences University. It continued with my presence at a meeting of the president's cabinet at Georgia Health Sciences and then a session here at 11 o'clock, then lunch, a little walking around campus, and now this session, and then a session with the Augusta State University President's Cabinet, which is at 3:30. And we'll conclude with another session down at Georgia Health Sciences University at 5:00 today. So what we need to do here, I've got my marching orders, is we do have an event at 3:30, so we're going to have to be looking for the last question, if not the last answer, at around about 3:15 or so. And I've been told, I forgot to say this this morning, that there are five microphones around, or if you want to ask a question that's actually heard and might get an answer, please step to one of these microphones. There's another microphone here which I could pass to you or throw to you. Let me just say, let me welcome you to this. First, I want to make sure the most important people are here. And I'd like to see the hands of all of those of you here who are students either at Georgia Health Sciences University or at Augusta State. How many students do we have? That's good. These are the people, these are the people for whom we do our work. These are the lives that we hope to add value to, that we always have, and we hope to add even more value to as we go down the line. For those of you who are from Augusta State University and our faculty and staff and our students, I want to say that in the meetings earlier this morning, I was impressed at how much we seem to be desired by those at Georgia Health Sciences University. You know, we'll probably still use the "we" and "us" terminology a little bit, "we" and "us" and "them" and "they." At some point, there'll be this new "we," we'll all be one. But right now, the interest in our students, our programs, oh, I don't know, maybe even our athletic program, our mascot and so forth, pretty strong. So I was pleased to hear that. I would love to hear your questions and provide some answers to them. Having said all of that, let me introduce to you Dr. Ricardo Aziz, the current president of Georgia Health Sciences University, and who will become the president of this new kind of university which is to be created in fairly short order. Dr. Aziz.
Thank you. It's an honor and a privilege to be here. So today, really, Dr. Bloodworth and I really want to field questions. This is really for you. I'm going to try to give you just a brief introduction of some of thoughts that I may or not have, maybe some of the questions and anxieties that we have heard and try to address them if I can. Firstly, I want you to know that I truly believe this is a great opportunity for us. This is an incredible opportunity that comes only about once every hundred years or so. This is an opportunity to create a new university. This is not about creating an overgrown health sciences campus. This is about a new university. So we are not interested, "we" speaking for Dr. Bloodworth and myself or the Board of Regents, this is not about overgrowing the health sciences campus. So the value of this university is exactly what it brings to the table. It's diversity in students, it's serving as a community access point, it's arts and sciences, it's liberal arts, it's education, it's business. These are things that we want to see grow. So I want to make sure that we're all on the same page. This is not about medicalizing these disciplines. This is about growing the university, like creating a whole new university that the state of Georgia can enjoy, the fourth truly comprehensive research university in Georgia, and also creating that resource, that economic engine, that job creator for our community. The second thing I want you to understand is that when I say "research university," that does not mean that everybody does research. Remember that we are first and foremost a university that really needs to address the teaching and training of students. That's what we're here for. That's our lifeline. When you say something is a research university, you're saying that part of the mission of that university now becomes the discovery of new things, the creation of new knowledge. But that doesn't mean that everybody does research. At Georgia Health Sciences University, something that you all would say is a research university, only 20% of our faculty actually do any kind of serious research. The rest, of course, do primarily training and education. So "research university" doesn't mean we're all going to become researchers. You do not do that. But it does mean that part of our mission will be to create that new knowledge. And that will be, again, not just in the health sciences field, that will be in all these other fields that will continue to develop their scholarship, their knowledge, and their research. Because the third fallacy that I want to address is that this is not about making the Augusta State campus, as we call it today, smaller. I mean, that would be foolish. Dr. Bloodworth and I don't want that, neither do the Board of Regents. They're trying to create a bigger enterprise. This consolidation in particular is about a bigger enterprise. So we want to grow this campus, its disciplines. We want to grow its offerings to our students. Because again, this is not about creating an overgrown health sciences campus, this is about creating a new university. It's an opportunity that very rarely is offered to any of us as faculty or as students or as leaders in our career. So I am very bullish on this. I'm very positive. I think we can do this. Challenges? Absolutely. But that's our job. Our job is to overcome challenges, whether it's challenges in the classroom, challenges in the laboratory, challenges in the clinical setting, challenges in the arts, or challenges in leadership. So I just wanted to share that with you. Let me also share with you one thing that I did not do with the last group of guests and faculty and students. Let me tell you a little bit about my background so you understand why my vision is not as difficult to comprehend. I actually am the product of two faculty members, a professor of physics and a professor of anthropology. There are no physicians in my family except for myself, as the first physician my siblings are. I grew up on a campus, University of Puerto Rico in Mayague. Very similar to this campus, it was a regional access campus, also had graduate programs and advanced degrees, but that's what it was. I also lived at home on campus with my parents while I went to college there, something that I'm not highly recommending, but nevertheless was an experience that allowed me to see that. So for me, the vision that I have of a great university is a vision that I have had before. This is not about denigrating the liberal arts or the business or education, it's on the contrary, growing those disciplines so we become a greater university and a greater value to our students. So at this point, I think questions might be the best way to proceed.
Question. By microphone, I'll try to see who is at a microphone.
Lights are a little bit tough up here.
Got to be a question somewhere. We had good questions this morning. Here we go.
Students ask the best questions, faculty too, but I always like it.
Um, yes, I, okay. My question is, I am currently attending ASU in the Health Science Track, but what my passion is, is I want to work in nutritional science. There's no program near this university or MCG for that. Is there a possibility that other programs that aren't offered yet could be created for students?
So I will tell you, I'm going to take this one because we've actually examined that. We are also, my research, in case anybody wants to know, is on fat tissue. I actually am still NIH-funded, have a laboratory and so on. I study fat tissue and all the magic of fat, in case anybody wants to know. Fat is the largest hormonal organ in the body, but we do not have that expertise, and I'm actually, in fact, have been asking the same question. When can we develop that kind of a program? These kind of collaborations, creating a larger university, makes it a lot more feasible for us to create those kind of new programs.
How do you foresee the joining of our two universities comparing to like UGA or Georgia Tech as far as the education programs offered and the sports and academic, other benefits offered compared to those other schools?
Well, you know, the question was, how do we compare to UGA and Georgia Tech? You know, we're not UGA and Georgia Tech. I mean, part of what I've heard here, and I should give you something else, my daughter is a student here. My daughter unbeknownst to me asked me a question this morning about how can I assure that we keep the same smallish environment, family environment that we currently have? That is an attraction for our students. That's what we want to have. So this is not about creating a UGA, Georgia Tech, those are different environments altogether. The key for us to do is how do we grow while maintaining that kind of collegial, that kind of closeness, that kind of family environment on this campus? So I just wanted to address that. You know, we're not trying to imitate that time of university, we're just trying to be ourselves. You know, it's true, Georgia Tech is emphasizing a lot of engineering and UGA emphasizes a lot of agriculture and environmental, and for us, of course, we have the health sciences. Each of us has something that we can leverage. But at the end of the day, we are comprehensive universities with full offerings, and of course, those environments are much bigger than what I think most of us would like.
My take on this is that a university stands to serve the needs of its students, students now and students in the future. And Georgia Tech moved down the engineering track, UGA moved down its track, what is it, number two party school in the nation right now? I don't know if that was the destination that was intended, but we're starting afresh here. We're starting afresh here. Now we can look at the needs of our students, the community we serve now, and in some sense, we're not going to be burdened by directions that were set a long time ago, and we can really look at meeting the needs now as we move forward, and I hope we will do that.
Okay. My question has to do, you talk about growing and you want to keep it small, so you're going to have to have certain standards. Actually, you're going to have to elevate those standards because a lot of people can get into ASU that can't get into other colleges. So you're going to kind of be taken away from a certain group of people that can't get college elsewhere, like...
Let me deal with that one. I've heard the chancellor say this, I've heard the chairman of the Board of Regents say this, I've heard the vice chair of the Board of Regents say this, I've heard it said in a presentation at the Board of Regents meeting that the access mission at Augusta State University remains because it's important. This is an important place, it always has been, for students to seek the opportunity to earn a college degree, to learn and to move forward with their lives. I don't think that's going to change. That's not going to change.
And that's not our intention. We don't want it to change. I'm not going to tell you this is simple, but I will make it, try to sort of give simple answers, everybody understanding that we're forging a rope. All of you are participants and players in a new future. Programs have different admission criteria. The admission criteria for medical school will certainly be different than admission criteria for a general undergraduate degree, and there may be differences in different tracks within the undergraduate degree and different tracks within the master degrees and so on. Those things are always there. Any large university has to deal with that heterogeneity of both students and otherwise. But what we know is we want to be that university that continues to serve our students in our community and serve as access point to those students. Now, we're not going to be disingenuous and say, all the students who come into the university will automatically get into medical school. That's not what we're talking about. But we will preserve that mission. It's an important one, we are dedicated to that, we are pledging to continue that, but that has nothing to do with the heterogeneity, if you would, of programs that any university would have and the heterogeneity of requirements for those programs.
It's more so not the programs, but the overall actual attendance, because it's impossible to keep a small school small and not have higher standards. I mean, you have, if you have these programs that people want to come into, you're going to have, you know, access of people that want to, just like people that want to get into Georgia Health and Sciences right now. I mean, there's a very limited number of people that can get in there. So you're looking for the best, and I'm not talking about specifically a program, I'm talking about overall for the entire university, you know, you will have to raise standards.
There's, no, I mean, let me repeat myself. We are creating a new university. Georgia Health Sciences University currently has standards for admission because it admits no freshmen, admits no sophomores. There is no standards for the admission of freshmen to Georgia Health Sciences University because we have none. So actually, this is complementary. This is a university that is created from the parts of two great institutions today that actually do not compete. They're actually, the sum is greater than, the whole is greater than the sum of the parts. So again, we don't have any standards on admitting freshmen because we don't admit freshmen. So that's why I think we have to be very careful that we don't have prejudice and say, well, the standards will go up. Will go up for what? I mean, for what degree? This is going to be a university that's going to have education degrees and it's going to have business degrees and it's going to have arts and science degrees, it's going to have health sciences degrees, it's going to have a large number of different degrees, and it's going to have undergraduate and bachelor levels and masters and PhDs. It's a different standard. And that heterogeneity is what normally happens in any university. So process in the working.
Over here.
I'd like to preface, excuse me, I'd like to make the statement that I don't believe this should be a pay-for-degree university by any standards, but as a student, filling out my FAFSA, I was given the outstanding statistic that only 23% of undergraduates graduate from this university. With the expansion of this university, what will be done to, I guess, help assure that these students don't continue to fall through the cracks?
Now, talk about that for a minute. I was in a meeting a few years ago when Georgia Health Sciences was still MCG and the then provost of MCG was being asked some questions, and I was too, about admission standards. And what he said was, let me explain it different. MCG is hard to get into and easy to get out of. ASU is easy to get into and hard to get out of. But at the end of the day, what that hard to get out of means is that there are academic standards here, that this university does not graduate students unless they have met those standards. And it is true that we are taking, and we take some pride in the fact that now, and I think this is going to continue consciously, that we accept students with a range of preparation and ability and do the best we can do, put as many resources as we can put to get those students to the point of academic success and graduation. I think that will continue. That's really important to do. It's even more important in the future as you look at the demographic changes in this nation. We really don't have more potential students in the future coming from families and backgrounds with a lot of wealth and a lot of educational attainment. We see population growth in this country among people who are going to be coming to us needing education, who come from backgrounds where there's not a great deal of wealth and educational attainment. So what we've been trying to do here in accepting the students we accept, assisting the students who are here, is what this nation needs to be doing, big time, all the time.
You know, so let me add to that because I actually believe exactly what Dr. Bloodworth has said. This should be a university not just of greatness and excellence and value, because I will drive that, but of opportunity. I'm an immigrant, it's about opportunity and that's what America is about. But there are two reasons why you're seeing a lowish graduation rate. One is that we need to do more to assist these students, to create that pipeline so that students remain in. That's something that all of us across the USG system, all universities are dealing with aggressively. We have to. Why do we have a 95, 98% completion rate? Because again, we don't take freshmen and sophomore. By the time they come to us, they've been pre-selected by other universities, which comes to the second reason that the rate is not high, and that is that many students will come here and then transfer. They say, okay, I want to go somewhere else, and they'll transfer out because at some level, they want to get into graduate school, they want to get into graduate degrees, they need to feel the need to transfer. And hopefully, as we get larger as a enterprise, not larger in just distant, if you would, or larger classrooms, I'm talking larger than enterprise, students will not feel the need to have to leave our community to get those degrees. So we have to face those two things. I think that's why the opportunities for us to actually improve on that is going to be great. Very good question.
Dr. Aziz, you described it as an enterprise, and I understand that it's a business decision, you know, to merge these two schools with the $1 billion or however much Nathan Deal proposed to cut in education, and I mean, that's colleges and pre-K. But with the budget cuts, I mean, how does it make sense to combine these two schools? Where are we saving money? Where are we losing money? Which departments do you view will suffer? And that includes faculty if you have two heads of, I don't know, security? If you have two heads of, you know, your custodians, power plants? How does that affect faculty? But especially as me, as a student, I'm a junior, I'm a biology major, and I'm definitely interested in the sciences, but how does that affect everyone else? How does that affect my tuition? One reason why I moved back to Georgia, and Augusta in particular, is because Augusta State has a really, really good bargain when it comes to tuition. It's really cheap. I lived in New York City and I had the opportunity to go to NYU. It's $45,000 a year to get into New York University. Here, I could pay, I don't know, $5,000 a year and get a great education. So I guess, you know, this is still kind of far-fetched, but how much is my tuition going up and how does that affect the different departments within the new school system?
I don't know of anybody who is not concerned about the fact that tuition has gone up around the nation, and not as much in Georgia as it has elsewhere, but it's gone up around the nation. I don't know anyone who's not concerned about the level of student debt these days. You know, that's a big concern because student loans don't even fall under bankruptcy protection. You can't escape them. I think people are concerned about that. Board of Regents is concerned about. One of the reasons behind action that the Board of Regents is taking, including consolidation, is to get more state support for higher education, to get more state tax dollars coming into the university system of Georgia. And if you look at the governor's budget recommendations, you see that $113 million, $113 something million dollars of new funding for the university system. That's good. It didn't happen last year. I think everybody is concerned about the same thing. On the other hand, you have to keep things going. You know, we have to pay for the electricity that keeps these lights burning, pay faculty salaries, we have to provide the support for students and so forth. There will be something of a balancing act, but I think there's a lot of commitment to maintaining a low cost, low cost of access to higher education in the state.
So let me try to address this as well. You mentioned a large number of things, and so if I forget, remind me. Firstly, is this is a business decision, and the answer to you is actually this consolidation is very different than any of the others if you actually read them through. This is about creating a larger enterprise for Georgia in our community. The business decision is in many ways sort of the driver at a surface, but the trueness of this is that this is a unique opportunity for the state to create that research university that they have not had in this region. Remember, the rest are all, you know, Athens and Atlanta. So we need to understand that it's not a purely business decision that the Board of Regents did for this institution. Secondly, yes, there will be efficiencies in administrative support, there will be some efficiencies, but we are two very lean organizations. I don't foresee a lot of changes in staff, we'll have to, people's seat will change, right? The roles may change, but I don't foresee that because we are fairly lean. But remember that at the end of the day, right, when you ask about costs of your education, the costs are that overhead. So it sort of is a little bit of a yin yang, you know? If you don't reduce your overhead by sort of having efficiencies, then the student costs go up, and we don't want that, we want the student costs to go down. So Dr. Bloodworth said, this is also an attempt to make sure we keep those costs down. Thirdly, have to remember that we, Dr. Bloodworth and I, do not set the tuition. The tuition for undergraduate degrees is set by the Board of Regents. We don't have any say-so in that at all, that's a system-wide setting. So I don't see that value going away. Many of the students that come to our medical schools stay in our medical school because sure, they could go to other medical schools, but it's a tremendous value. So at the end of the day, this will be better for our students. Certainly, we don't expect the cost to go up. If anything else, remember that the Georgia Health Sciences University has resources that the current Augusta State does not have. Secondly, we don't expect a tremendous amount of cuts in staff or anything like that because we are lean organizations, but at the end, that efficiency in a larger enterprise will provide a better service to our students. And that's what the vision is, that's what we truly are intending to do. There's nothing really hidden in this particular agenda, because if you look at it, this is totally different than anything else that is being proposed in any other part of the state. And we should be proud of that because it means truly that we are being valued. Thank you.
Clear, next, and then here, and then there.
With the consolidation of our two schools and our two campuses, is the, are we going to share facilities or are our undergraduate programs going to stay here locally on campus or are we going to also expand out to the Georgia Health Sciences campus as well and vice versa?
At the end of the day, it will be one university. And there'll be one university. You know, so when it's done, all facilities will be open to all members of that one university.
And, you know, right now, we're talking about us and them, but it'll be we. And at the end of the day, those decisions will be made on what's most important. You know, I don't know, some health sciences programs that currently are here perhaps should be done in an environment which has, is proximate to the actual action of a real clinical environment, but I can't make those decisions. Those decisions are made by the faculty, and they're made by the chairman, and they're made by the deans. This is not something that presidents micromanage, but at the end of the day, Dr. Bloodworth is right, this is going to be our facilities and our JAGs and our music department. It's not going to be us and them.
Over there, Nick? Okay.
I had the same question in that line too. How well are we going to communicate, you know, the vision and the mission and the values, you know, if we have three different campuses, including the expansion of the west campus? So, you know, because during that debate, we had that discussion, you know, that that was kind of an issue of, you know, like, how are we going to communicate? Students that want to stay there where they are, you know, how are we going to meet and then share the values and the diversity would be that? You know, how are we going to, if we can't meet, how are we going to fulfill that value?
But this is a, so let's be, we have to be clear, this issue is something that all universities are facing. Right now, it's a transition for us, for other large universities, Kennesaw State, Georgia Southern, certainly we talked about UGA, Georgia State, but other universities across the nation, they have many multiple campuses. Very rarely, if ever, now are universities located in one campus because again, they have different facilities, different needs, different expansion needs and this kind of thing. So, but that does not preclude us from having one vision, one mission, one statement, one sense of family, and in fact, we must have one vision, one mission, one sense of family. So I don't know that the campuses per se are things that we should be worried about. One of those things that is and is an advantage, if you would, is that we have a strong sense of mission to our community at ASU. GHSU has a strong sense not only of mission to our community. GHSU has a strong sense, not only of mission to our community here by providing tremendous health care and being that net that our community needs, but we also have a statewide footprint. We have statewide relevance. We are the state's academic health center. So our ability to actually have an impact as a university on the state is going to increase. But still, it'll be one vision, one mission, one family.
Thank you.
I have two questions, actually. My first question, why wasn't there any input from faculty, staff, students? Because at the end of the day, it affects us more than anybody in here, actually. Because, I mean, in my opinion, just last Thursday, this story just broke. Tuesday, you guys make a decision. Well, not you, I mean, you know what I mean. On Tuesday, a decision was made to consolidate these two schools. Just why wasn't there a survey done, polls conducted, anything?
I have an answer for that. Not sure everybody agrees with me. But it's a difficult thing to do by the Board of Regents. It's virtually a restructuring, a significant restructuring of how higher education is done in the state of Georgia. Now, my take on this, given what I know about Augusta and what I know about support for this concept in Augusta, my take is, is had there been open discussions and input in Augusta, we could have gotten to this point anyway. It might have taken longer, but we might have gotten here. We stood a chance. We're talking about two institutions that are three miles apart, that's the most. We're talking about, I mean, it's this morning at the, down at Georgia Health Sciences, someone asked those in the audience to raise their hand if they had earned a degree at Augusta State. And what I saw was that there was a greater percentage of Georgia Health Sciences people down there who had earned degrees at Augusta State than there were people from Augusta State who had earned degrees at Augusta State. So this could have happened here. I don't think it could have happened at the other places. I think the other place has been very, very difficult to get to any kind of agreement on consolidation. That's my take. It's important for the board to do this, important to make a statement to the General Assembly and to the governor that we're going to do things right. The university system of Georgia didn't need 35 separate institutions. But my take is that had the discussion been open in Augusta, we probably could have gotten to this point. Not so sure about those other places.
And I'm just going to say that Dr. Bloodworth is right.
All right. I have a question.
It doesn't often happen.
Good afternoon to you both. Dr. Aziz, you mentioned at the beginning of this presentation that the new university would serve as a job creation engine for the area. But as I understand, a consolidation works, many times the opposite is true, and jobs will be lost in the process. And I just wonder if you care to expand on that a little bit?
So, no, I mean, we're looking too much at stories of mergers and acquisitions and parcelling out of stock companies. This is a consolidation of universities. The goal here is to increase the offerings to students, which means more programs, more faculty, perhaps more colleges, more departments. It's also meant to increase the number of students we can attract and offer. It's also meant to keep our students when they come into the university that they don't have to leave. So no, I think we have to be very clear that the way consolidations work, this is not a business, this is not a merger and acquisition through a business partnership. This is truly about growing the university. The mandate of the Regents has been very clear. This consolidation, I can't speak for any other consolidation in the state of Georgia today. This consolidation is about growing and creating a whole new university to grow and serve Georgians and prepare them for the future. You heard that. If you listened to the governor's speech in which he stated the state of the state and he spoke about consolidation and mergers. If you listened to the chancellor about what he said, and Bill and I can tell you, we, these are marching orders for us. They didn't say to us, "Make it smaller." They said to us, "Make it bigger." So at the end of the day, it's a job creator. And that's really what we're intending to do. That's a great question because again, people get confused between mergers and acquisitions in the business world and what is happening in this, which is the creation of a new university.
We've got about 10 minutes more. We're going to need a question short and the answer short. There'll be a challenge from up here.
I'm just curious. It seems like you all have been vague and somewhat contradictory.
We have been.
We're going to get big, but we're going to stay small. Haven't heard any specific benefits, especially for our campus. Y'all have a huge budget down there, or we have a small one up here. I get the impression that we're going to have more students on this, on this campus, you know, because y'all are going to want to use our facilities, our classrooms, stuff like that. I don't see benefits. I haven't heard anything specific. I hear perhaps, maybe, we'll see. Is there anything outlined for us to expect, for us to look at, to, you know, so we actually have an idea of what's going to be happening to us? And then another big thing is, a lot of people bring it up, but I haven't heard anybody ask, the name change. Are we going to have fun with that?
Go ahead.
I'm happy to begin to tackle it for you. First, we are forging a new road. That is why Dr. Bloodworth and I are very cautious about how we answer things. We don't want to be disingenuous when he and I have found out about this about a week ago and we're trying to work on this. But let me be very clear that the benefits for ASU are very, very tangible. First, you're going to be associated with an academic health center that is a billion-dollar enterprise, and that is the only true revenue generator within the university system of Georgia. That gives you access to much greater revenue and monies, to be fair, than you had before. Secondly, regarding students using this campus, while I do hope there's going to be interaction between students, but at the end of the day, actually, if you think about it, the students who come here are undergraduate students, the students who actually are spending time in the Health Sciences campus are Health Sciences students who are primarily in the higher level undergraduates or graduate degrees. We don't expect classes to be all over the place like any other campus. There'll be areas where this will be dedicated to this and so on and so forth. In fact, if anything, students will probably be using, students that currently are here, perhaps nursing students, will be using the facilities on the Health Sciences campus so they can be closer to the actual health science enterprise. Three, the number of offerings that our students are going to have, and when I say "our" students, I'm talking about really ASU and GHSU students, is going to be increased significantly. For example, GHSU students and faculty, many of them would like to have MBAs, many of them would like to have English degrees, many of them would like to have other degrees that would allow us to be associated. But here, too, there are many opportunities to create joint programs between the departments that are currently here and the health system. But in addition to that, we are planning to grow the offerings to students here. So that's why it sounds contradictory when we say we're going to grow the university but keep it small. That's very different. The classroom size has to do with the number of students to faculty ratio. That's what we're looking at. That we hope not to alter significantly because we want to keep that special attention that our students receive. That doesn't mean we're going to remain at the same number of student body. You've already increased in student body. The student body ASU is now 6,700 or so students. It has increased, and yet we've been able to maintain that type of family environment. So it's not, it sounds contradictory, but it isn't. But to be fair, neither Dr. Bloodworth nor I have a lot of details today. There's an implementation team that will be put together. They're going to be working out a lot of these issues from that point of view.
Great. Who's next? I think over here.
Real quick, my name's Javon Armstrong. I'm actually coming from a community perspective. I'm the president of the Sand Hills Neighborhood Association. And we were in the midst of working with ASU in terms of coming more into the neighborhood. Sand Hills, right down Fleming, Mount Auburn, a lot of times, people don't necessarily know where the area is. Wanted to invite you as well, from Milich, to come on over and let's hang out a little bit and talk about, it's a neighborhood that needs to be revitalized with the merger. Just want to make sure in terms of that development that we can, again, grow with the merger as well. Because at first, it was, "Oh, no, what's going on? We're not going to be able to." But Dr. Bloodworth is aware of an old school, the Wheat Academy, that's been closed for about six, seven years.
So the question is, can we work with you and continue the collaboration?
Exactly. Get that merger.
I can answer that one. Yes.
Absolutely. That is exactly right. Remember that Georgia Health Sciences University has a tremendous experience in actually having community partnerships, and we work tremendously in doing those on many different levels, educational, health, and so on. Absolutely. Without knowing the details, of course, absolutely.
Thank you. Let me congratulate you all for a good job you're doing so far. I have two different things to share. First of all, this is history. History is today. But this history is going to be very weak and very bad for our records. Let me tell you why. Because the method is backwards. What does it mean? That the discussion, why we didn't have the discussion last year or last semester or something like this? And Dr. Aziz is a leader in MCG, tailored to research and investigation, but in any single investigation, even about Ant, we observe, we analyze, and then finally, we proposed. But the Board of Regents did it backwards. They proposed, and now we're analyzing. So I don't know. That's one thing. The second one is that we still have one card down the table. This one. There's a missing link here. And you have said a couple of times that this is a business enterprise. Yes, like Burger King is an enterprise. This is implied. It's not on top of the discussion because what we have been talking about is about the makeup. But we, internally, we have a structure, and that means numbers, and that means money. So to me, one of the synonyms for fusion is to get some money. To get some money, we need to cut something. Like, you are a very good example in this history of how to get money. One of you two, I mean, your jobs are going to disappear. It's going to be gone. You see? That's one example. Very clear. It's right there. So by doing this, the system is going to get some money. But you know, and we know, because I'm already doing my research, that what we're trying to save is billions of dollars to, because it's a big cut. It's nationwide. You say it's a nationwide problem. So we need to say this and put this on top of the table. Because this is what is implied. So let's stop the makeup thing and talk about implications. Okay, thank you.
So I'll simply say, all we can tell you is what the mandate that Dr. Bloodworth and I have, and that is to grow an enterprise. Anybody who thinks that a university, whether it's ASU or GHSU or any other, is not a business enterprise, and you want it run by individuals who do not understand how to run business, then it is going to be dangerous. ASU is a $70 million enterprise, not for the faint of heart. Dr. Bloodworth has been working very, very hard to grow that, to get monies and resources. So yes, it is true. The question isn't whether it's business or not. Where's Mark Miller to defend me in the business side? It's about what you do with that enterprise. What is the mission? What is the goal? You can run with business principles, the Red Cross, or you can run GE. So at the end of the day, we have to be as savvy as we can as presidents and as leaders and as deans and as chairs to make sure that we have enough resources to train the students. Not a matter of just simply saying, "We need more money. Let's jack up the students' tuition." That would be bad business. So at the end of the day, while we use business principles, our goal is to grow this university.
We're running out of time fast. And we're going to end up with more people standing at microphones than we have time to answer questions. That's the way it's going to work out. But the discussions are going to continue. Dr. Aziz is going to be off on this campus, off on this campus. We have a meeting coming up at 3:30 with the President's Cabinet and some other people. Jeff, you will be there. So we will just take, we'll take one more question. Dr. Aziz, you can look at the questions and see which one you'd like to have a question from.
But I do want to say, I do want to say something. I am going to be learning as much as I can over the next few months. I'm going to be listening to what you have to say. We don't know each other yet, but I intend to spend as much time as I can on this campus, meeting with each and every one of you, either in groups or in individuals. So again, this is not going to be the first or the last conversation. We're going to have lots of it. Dr. Bloodworth and I felt that we needed to get out in front of you as soon as we knew something to be able to actually talk to you. And right now, I'm not going, I'm going to do it by seniority. Yes, sir.
Thank you. I hope we don't both regret that choice.
Ask me, I'll pass the question on. I'll get you an answer.
This campus had a discussion about having a faculty fool whose job was to stand up and ask questions from, that were submitted, and this happens to be one, so forgive me.
We will. We'll have a significant say.
I've been here 23 years, and you are the first president that the faculty didn't play a major role in choosing, except when we had a president die in office and we had an interim president who was appointed for a temporary position. So we've not had any faculty input in your designation. I think it may even be more critical, well, equally critical, that we have input in terms of the provost or the chief academic officer. Can you assure us that we will do that back by the process of shared governance that we are used to here?
I can. Because in fact, every single search done at my university, even for the health system, which is a separate corporation, has a large committee with faculty, students, staff representation. We have a centralized search process, so we make sure that every search is uniform and every search takes every, into consideration, every part of our enterprise, whether that individual comes in to work in that enterprise or not. So in fact, I can assure you that. Because this is not about my designating autocratically. Now, interims may be an issue because we may have to do some things quickly, but permanence, absolutely. And in fact, we have a search system for interims, by the way. So I should tell you that all interims we have appointed, with a couple of exceptions, have also gone through a internal search process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Five o'clock, the Lee Auditoria, Georgia Health Sciences University, another forum like this. You're all welcome to come down there.
Come on down. Absolutely.
Yeah, come on down. Come on down.
Thank you, Matt.
Bring your question. Thank you so much for coming this afternoon. Thank you so much.